Good evening, everyone. I want to call this meeting the Harden County Board of Education to order. First order on the business, on our agenda is a pledge of allegiance. If everyone will please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to thank everybody for coming out tonight. It's always nice to see you, a big crowd out there and everybody's smiling faces. Mr. Bland, you have our board commitments?
Sure. To improve our effectiveness, the Harden County Board of Education commits to keep children first, to listen, be prepared, be professional, demonstrate financial stewardship, represent the entire district, and support district goals, and support board decisions.
Thank you. Mr. Wright, you got our recognitions?
Yes, ma'am, I do, Madam Chair. We have some students that we're going to recognize because they did so well in state competition, and then we have lots and lots of HCS Better Together Award winners, as you can tell by the stack. We've never had stacks of plaques, so we have those tonight, and that's a great thing. So if you'll pass those resolutions, Madam Chair, we'll get going.
I move that we pass the recognitions as presented.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jaya, did I pronounce that right correctly, Mr. Rowland? Jaya Weedner, are you here, Jaya? Come on up here, Jaya. Jaya is a James T. Alton, she gets a medal, Mr. Casey. Ms. Weedner is a James T. Alton, middle school eighth grader, and she has earned first place in the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. State Commission Art Contest, sponsored by the, yeah, that's right. That is sponsored by the Kentucky Historical Society. Mr. Rowland tells me that her artwork was created with an inspiration from the following quote from Dr. King, "I know that love is the only answer to mankind's problems." Thank you, sweetheart, good job, congratulations.
And Mr. Wright, are her parents here?
Parents here? All right, congratulations to you as well.
Thank you.
All right, Annabelle Dorr, Annabelle, are you here? Come on up, Annabelle. Annabelle is a John Harden, she gets a medal as well, yes, sir. She is a John Harden High School freshman, ninth grader, and she earned first place in the 12- to 14-year-old division of the Team Kentucky Transportation Cabinet Adopt a Highway Art Contest. Congratulations, Annabelle. Mom or dad or parents here? All right, thank you, congratulations.
Principal's a little system.
All right. Now we're going to move on to our Better Together Awards, and of course, these go to students, staff, and community members who just symbolize or kind of really typify the HCS Better Together hashtag. And so the following students consistently served with the Central Kentucky Rods and Machines Organization and the Salvation Army during the group's Combined Holiday Assistance Program, gathering toys, sorting, and distribution. If you haven't seen that, I would suggest visiting that next year. It's at the old Lincoln Trail Elementary, and it is a very well-run task, and it is, I mean, they know exactly what they're doing. Ms. Morgan is involved with it, and she probably should be getting a plaque as well, but we like to recognize these students. So when you hear your name called, please come forward. Andreas Jenkins, Andreas, he does not have a plaque, and he's one of the ones I forgot, but that's why we're calling him up first. He gets a medal, yeah. I forgot to order Andreas's plaque, so, yeah, I'll give him a plaque. I'll give him a plaque later, I promise, we'll make it special. Bailey Barnes, Olivia Bello, Lily Callahan, Jacob Clark, I hope you guys are coming. Okay, here we go. Christina, and I may, I may, yeah, I hope I don't butcher your name, Christina. Christina Cruz Onoffray, Adiana Edwards, Chad Frederick, Madeline Gay. I'll slow down, Mr. Bland, I am so sorry. Yeah, I'm so sorry. I'm expecting you to know their names. All right, so we said Sidney Hayes, Jordan Hodge. This is Jordan. Oh, this is Sidney. This is Sidney, Mr., yes, Mr. Casey, that's Sidney. Jordan Hodge, Lauren Hodge, Samantha Kip, this is Samantha Kip coming.
Samantha is coming.
Deana Lively, Alex Rando, Jade Rio Rodriguez, Jac Schall, Sophia Stover, and Landon Wood. Awesome, well, let's give these folks a round of applause. They gave lots of time, and when they probably should have been studying for finals or something, they had already finished finals, okay. But these young folks are all in the academy program, so thank you all. Are moms or dads or any folks here? You all stand up as well, you all raise these children right. All right, thank you, guys. We appreciate you all and what you do for our community. So the following staff members, they had a lot of guidance from staff, and Mr. Casey, move on over to the next stack. So they had a lot of guidance in this, and these are our Family Resource Center coordinators and U Service Center coordinators who do so much anyway for our students, but they really step up their game come the holidays. So Jody Bodnar, I know Jody is here, come on up, Jody. Craig Buchanan, Brendan Chaney.
Craig's not here.
This is Brendan. This is Brendan Chaney, Mr. Casey. April Durin, this is April. Lauren Foster. Lauren's not with us, Mr. Casey. Leslie Hall, did I see Leslie? Yeah, I did see Leslie. Shamika Harden, I see Shamika. Jennifer Hornbach. Joe Jaggers, I saw Joe. Cherish Calden, there's Cherish, you see her? Rita McMillan, did I see Rita? There she is, come on up. Jaren Mourning. Sophie Newton, Sophie. Teresa Overson is here. Not to be mistaken for Denise, Suzanne Parrott. There's another story in that we'll talk about later. Donna Probst is here. Mandy Sanders, Erica Scott. Brittany Smith, here's Brittany. Yeah, this is Brittany. Peggy Snow, Peggy's here, Mr. Casey. And Jennifer Williams, Jennifer is not here. Well, thank you all so much for everything you do for our students. Hold on, I think Mr., there's several pictures, several cameras, several phones up. All right, thank you all so much. And now our final two community awards will go to some of our greatest friends, some of our best friends in White Mills. The first community award goes to the White Mills Civic League, and I will bring them both up together, the White Mills Civic League and White Mills Christian Church. Come on up, gentlemen. The White Mills Civic League has hosted a chili supper and its annual bridge lighting for many, many years, and each year, the Civic League donates all of its proceeds to the Lakewood Elementary School Family Resource Center. Thousands of dollars have been donated over time. Those funds have helped countless families during the holidays and through some of life struggles during the school year. So thank you to the Civic League. And then Brother Tim is here representing White Mills Christian Church. As supports Lakewood Elementary School in so many ways, the church donates to the school's Family Resource Center on a regular basis to help meet the needs of the school's families. Additionally, the church selected three Lakewood families to support as part of a local mission project. The church spent several days repairing the homes of these families, and church members installing floors, built entire rooms, and everything in between. So thank you both for what you do for our students, we appreciate you. It's wonderful, Madam Chair, to have lots of folks to recognize, and we'll have another pretty good stock next month.
Sounds good.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
Mr. Sutton, you got our focus on academics?
All right, tonight is going to be all about technology, it's kind of double-dipping here. I'm going to be introducing Mr. Tab to you in a minute. For those of you who don't know Mr. Tab, he's been with our district for 17 years as a teacher, assistant principal, now the director of technology for quite a few years. And he's got Ms. Pierceall here with him tonight, kind of talk about things we do with technology. He's going to give you an update of how we're progressing with what we're doing here in the district. So Mr. Tab, Ms. Pierceall, I'm going to turn over you guys and your students.
All right, I've got two presentations tonight, he's putting up my second one later, so I don't need that one quite yet, so. Well, we have, first of all, we're going to talk about our student internship program that we have at technology. We bring in, we have two hired interns that come in and fix Chromebooks for us. All of our Chromebook repair comes in, and they handle a majority of that. I want to have them come up and introduce themselves first. Javion and Zaid.
I'm Javion Clevidence, I go to North Harden High School. I have to say that our job as interns with helping with the technology department is extremely, extremely like, good for us, because I do enjoy it, it is a fun job, we do talk around, we do help each other out, and it was my first time as a senior to actually get immersed into something that I really liked, other than other stuff like, I'm an athlete, I do play football, which is my last year, but I do see those, this as a better opportunity for my future. My future goes in life, like with cybersecurity as I take as EC3, and with hardware fixing, AKA the Chromebooks. So I do appreciate this opportunity as a student and as a person in general.
My name is Zaid Abdal-Rahman from Central Harden. I've been doing the internship a little bit longer than Javion, but I also really appreciate it. It's a nice little bit of money that I can earn during school, which is always good. I also have a lot of fun doing it, and I guess just getting a little bit of hands-on experience before going into the workforce, going to college, doing things like that is just very useful for me, since I'm going to be going into that field. And I guess just the work environment is really nice, it's just, it's a nice change of pace from just the hustle and bustle of a senior year, and I'm glad that I got the opportunity.
So this is our third year of having students repair Chromebooks. We've added a lot of Chromebooks to the district the past three years. The first year we started doing it, they did it at EC3 as part of the IT pathway. Last year, we decided, I think the board approved some money for student interns, so we took that opportunity to do interviews last year, we went through that process with the kids, and we brought them over to our building this year. They come to the annex, and they come here for half a day and work, and this is our second year doing that process, so that's been really good. And we appreciate, like, transportation has really helped out, getting the kids to and from EC3, they'll drop them off, pick them up, that's been really helpful. And then Robert Carden with the pony, he brings us all these Chromebooks every day and takes them back to the schools for us. So that's been, that's been very helpful. But yeah, the numbers, the kids last year, they fit, they had 1,950 work orders so far this year, the other day was 999 they had done so far this year. So these guys are a huge, huge benefit to us, getting these, and the quickness they're getting back to the schools has been, it's really great. I want, Wayne Simpson is here as well, and Dana Pierceall, she's the IT teacher at EC3. Wayne's one of our technicians, and he kind of, I've brought him in to kind of also handle all the Chromebooks, because it's so much of what we do now. He kind of oversees these guys, I want him to kind of talk about the process of what happens from school to us.
Sure, thanks, Lake. So I guess process starts with a broken Chromebook. So kid breaks his Chromebook, or student has an issue with their Chromebook, there's a problem, it could be broken hardware, it could be it's glitchy, it's doing something weird, they go with their teacher, or sometimes the SDC slash librarian at their school, kind of depends on the school and how they work. That teacher or the SDC will put in a work order for technology, pardon me. And then we have a tech, like me, that are assigned to each school, they will come check out the Chromebook. If it's something quick they can fix and get right back to the student, they will, they'll fix it. Sometimes you can reset the Chromebook and fix things or different things like that, so they'll take care of that. If they can't take care of it, they put it into our Chromebook repair system, which is what me and the other, the interns work out of. So then they'll put it in there, they'll put a sticker on it saying it's coming from this school. When they put it in the system, they put what the issue is, troubleshooting steps they may have taken. Then they put it out for Robert, or the pony driver, he will come pick it up, he brings it to us, he comes to us twice a day, he goes to every school twice a week, I believe. So he gets those, he brings them to us, gets them in. We got a system there that we work with, the guys, when they come in, they'll get the Chromebooks that are new, they check them into system, so that way if, that way if a teacher calls looking for one, I can go, I can go in the system, look and say, oh, it's been checked in, so it's here somewhere. That way, they know it made it to the shop. Then the interns will take that, these guys will take it, they'll look at it, oh, they'll look at, they'll bring up the work order, they'll check it out, oh, I see, it needs a new screen, the screen's cracked. So then they start to work on it, they'll take it apart, they'll put in new screens, put it all back together, verify that what they did fixed the issue, and then they, we put a little red sticker on it, which everybody knows means we fixed it, they take it and set it out to, for Robert to pick back up, picks it up, takes it back to the school, and it's, it goes right back. Guys are pretty quick, especially if it's screen repairs, or keyboard replacements, or keys that are missing, we usually can turn them around pretty quick. If Robert stops at a school on Tuesday and brings it to us, it's back at the school on Thursday, you know, when he goes back, so we try to turn those around really quick. If it's something more, or we also do warranty replacement work and stuff like that, so I usually take care of the warranty replacements or anything that gets a little more in-depth, then they might need some more troubleshooting or something like that, so, but that's typically the process. We get, I don't know, 20-ish a day probably come in, every day. Yeah, so.
How have the interns helped with this process as far as the number of Chromebooks that we can get back and forth compared to before?
It's been great, so before I came along, as Lake mentioned, to kind of oversee Chromebooks and the fixing of those, Kevin Montgomery, I don't know if you guys may know him, he has many hats that he wears, takes care of cameras and sound, yeah, the sound and all that kind of fun stuff. He was also doing Chromebook repair. And just him alone, you know, we sometimes had, it took a while to get them turned around and get them back, because he couldn't devote the time to do that. So I mean, having me coming in and having the student interns, I mean, it's been invaluable. As Lake said, they did, you know, 1,900 last year, and almost, or 1,000 now, I'm sure by now, have been fixed, and I don't see why it wouldn't reach 1,900 or more this year, so, I mean, we couldn't do it without them.
It'd just take a lot longer for it.
Yeah, it would, we could do it, you might not get it back this year.
Well, 20 a day, no one person is going to fix 20 in a day, so that isn't going to happen.
So like I said, we're getting these kids from the IT pathway at EC3, and we have a new teacher at that pathway this year, Dana Pierceall, I just want to let her come up here and tell you about her program as well.
Before that, I have a question about the Chromebooks. What's the most interesting thing you found inside one?
Oh, I don't know, I mean, you can imagine. We've had some critters come in, and we have some device, like if something comes in like that, we have a, we have like an oven that we can put them in that kind of kills all things. So we had to implement that recently, and it wasn't too pleasant, but we took care of it, but yeah. Ms. Pierceall, come on.
Hi, I'm Dana Pierceall, I'm the new computer science teacher at EC3. When I started this position, I sort of just hit the ground running, looking at our pathways and our certifications, and I immediately started to streamline those and try to bring in as many pathways as possible, so the kids had different opportunities. What you have there, it tells all the pathways, but we went from having three pathways to now, starting next year, we're going to have five, and several of the pathways, you could easily get two pathways. And then same with the certifications, just about every class, you get an industry certification. These guys are, Javion's taking one tomorrow. But also, I've started a TSA Technology Students of America chapter, very recently, we got that going, and we're going to compete in the regional event coming up in March, and I've got quite a few kids signed up for different things, but I think I just decided that I'm going to recruit these two for extemporaneous speech, because they did a really good job, because they just made that up on the spot, I think. So yeah, they're definitely doing that. But I'm really excited to see where this program goes. I'm hoping that we can have good interest and good enrollment. We did great with the eighth graders that came and toured, and they got to see all the cool things and got all the information, so we're just excited about where we're going to be able to take the pathway in the program.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, like I'm double-duty tonight, I get my departmental update as well. So, technology department, there's 13, 14 including myself in the department. I have a clerk, Lori Love, she helps me with all our E-rate filing. We have three network administrators, one AV technician, and AV technician is not a really a good term for that job of what Kevin Montgomery does, it's more than that. A maintenance technician is, deals with a lot of wiring and hardware out in the schools, and then we have six computer technicians, and they're out in the schools, they're assigned four or five schools apiece, and they go do the hands-on work in the buildings with devices. And I have brought Wayne in, because our, the type of work orders we're getting, most of it's Chromebooks now, things have moved around, so we've kind of reshuffled, reorganized how those technicians work this past year. And then we have a new digital learning coach this year, Ms. Caitlin Pharaoh, she started with us back in the summer and has hit the ground running, and we're really excited about that. Work orders, we get teachers, anybody in the school can put in a work order online, we deal with, you know, devices, printers, projectors, interactive panels, network issues, all those things you see there. And now, even more, you know, in the past 10 years, security cameras have fallen under technology. We have 1,100, over 1,100 security cameras in the district. Those cameras have to be able to keep up to 30 days of recordings for legal purposes, so that's a lot of infrastructure and data traveling across the network. And then the past five years, access control has kind of really grown, and that falls under this too. With the help of buildings and grounds, we kind of handle the electrical side, the electronics side of that, but we have over 120 doors now on access control, and that's growing all the time. So so far this year, in all those things, we've had 5,800 work orders that have been submitted, so we stay pretty busy. And not often, you know, and that's not counting the ones where you get grabbed going down the hall, something happened where there's no work order, there's, you know, about double that amount of really. Chromebooks, so we started back in the 21, 22 school year as like a one-to-one initiative as part of our Esser funds. So in the summer of '21, we, the plan was to spread it out over three years, so we didn't get, you know, all of them all at once, so we were going to do about 3,500 a year of replacing old stock with new. Chromebooks, really, they have a four- or five-year lifespan, that even if they kept working, Google will cut off the updates to them, you know, it's part of their business model. So after five years, they'll stop updating, and then things will stop working, so we can't, you know, keep them forever. So the plan was, we kind of get in a five-year cycle of purchasing, so we bought that first group the summer of '21, went well. Then the federal government came out with a new program called Emergency Connectivity Funding, and it was a $7 billion program that wanted to help get connectivity in schools and at home, and so they eventually included Chromebooks as part of that. And we were able to get 8,750 Chromebooks last year for no cost to the district. So I wasn't planning on adding that many last year, but I had to take advantage of what we could, what we were eligible for, so we kind of got double of what we planned on, so we got a year ahead, so it kind of threw us off there, but we have one more year budgeted with Esser funds for another 3,500, which I'm not going to do this summer, I'm going to wait until the end of those Esser monies more towards next year, to where we can kind of stretch that out a little further. But beyond Esser, it's kind of like, we need to kind of figure out what our plan is going forward with how we're going to treat Chromebooks and what our plans are as a district, kind of, that's the next planning phase.
So we would need to replace one quarter of them every year if they...
One fifth would be, you could go one-fifth if you needed to. So, and then we've gone grades three through 12 with that initiative. The schools, elementary schools, pretty much, a lot of them have gone back and through other funds, made it K2 as well. So it's, they're everywhere. This was the Chromebook info that the students are doing. Those students, they really are invaluable to us. The amount of time it takes for us to get them back has really improved. They, like, they were great last year, these two this year have been fantastic, so we're really, really happy with the way that's gone. Another part of the Esser money that the district decided was to replace all of our aging projectors and smart boards with interactive panels. A lot of our smart boards were 15 years old and weren't doing very well anymore, and we were having a lot of issues with them, so it was time for this. So this, last, a year ago, December, we did the first round, we tried to spread this out over three years, again, we didn't want to take everybody and replace them the same year, and then in X amount of years, when all those need to be replaced, be stuck in a position where we have to replace them all at once. So tried to spread those out, so we spread out, you know, replacement time and cost. So we hit a bunch of schools back in December, we did the second round this summer with the rest of our elementaries and some middle schools, and then this coming summer, we're going to finish up at the high schools in West Harden and Sicilia Valley. Central Harden, we're kind of going to wait on as the construction goes, but. We also have an aging phone system, and we've used some Esser funds to replace that aging system. About half of our schools are on our new Mitel system, so we ordered those back in the spring. We are still waiting for all but two, I mean, all of them but two, so the supply chain issues have hit that industry pretty hard, so we're waiting on those. As soon as we get them, we're ready to go swap those out in those schools. It'll, we've had some issues with our old system, they don't make it anymore, it's hard to get parts to replace them, we have a service agreement with a company that can get us the parts, but they don't always work, because they're using... get us the parts, but they don't always work because they're using refurbished parts. It's a whole, it's, it's, we're, we'll be ready for this new system. It'll be good for the district. And going forward, our, our projects, right now, we have a rewiring project that we qualified for E-Rate. So E-Rate funding is something we apply for every year. E-Rate's a federal program. Basically, your eligibility in it is based off your free introduced lunch numbers. We get, it's for network connectivity. So think wireless access points, thinks the network gear in the closets. It's not for devices. It's about infrastructure. So the federal government, if we apply for those types of things, we have to go through a big application process. And we apply for those. If we get approved, E-Rate pays 80% of that project. We pay 20. So this year, we've got, this project I applied for last year was to rewire these schools, North Harden, Bluegrass, JTA, New Highland, Metta View, College View. The central office and bus garage, we've held off on. But the schools we did this year, we're in the middle of it right now. They're working at College View at the, at night, the contractor is, rewiring that building. These are all our oldest wiring, schools with the oldest wiring. So we, the rest of the schools are in pretty good shape, but these we wanted to get up to standard. So that's gone really well. That'll finish, hopefully by the start of school next year, we'll be done with all those schools. It's a big project. It was a, it was a million-dollar project that we paid 20% of, $200,000 for. So it, it was a good, it's a good bang for our buck. And then we're gonna look at upgrading our wireless. That's what I'm gonna look at applying for this year. Our, the window's open right now. That's something I'm in the middle of currently. And then the interactive project, the interactive panels, we're gonna finish this summer. And then Chromebooks, we gotta kind of figure out where, where we want to go with that. But that has been, it's been a busy two years for us and got a lot of, a lot of projects going on and a lot, a lot more to come. So that's it.
Now we get to talk about Mr. Tab. See, in Belize he's here. Just a few quick things. He's, he very quietly goes about his job. He's very efficient and he does not want any credit. He doesn't seek that, but he's a very integral part of our instructional service department. He comes to every one of our meetings. He's very forward-thinking. He makes sure that we're up to date with the best technology. Example, the interactive panels. He's very conscious about his budget and how he spends the money. I want you to think back to the pandemic when kids didn't have internet access. He made sure they had hotspots to go up to the farthest part of the county so they could access their lessons. He made sure there was Wi-Fi hotspots put on the outside of school so people could pull up outside the buildings and access their lessons on the Google Classroom. Much of that got overlooked, the work that he was doing behind the scenes because of all the health situations we were dealing with. But once again, he didn't want any credit, but he, a lot of the work that got done by students was a result of his work and his department. So I want to thank him for, for doing that, making that happen.
Technology is kind of obviously very important, but one of those things, you don't pay a whole lot of attention to it till you've got a problem or it's, it's not working. So we, we appreciate Mr. Tab very much. All right. Mr. Wright, any visitors sign up? Okay. All right. Construction updates. We had some updates at our lunch meeting today. Things are moving along with Central Harden. Sounds like things are moving along pretty well. Weather's been cooperating for the most part. Got some good news on our GOLs and getting some of that stuff done. And things are moving along with the gems. And so just overall, we've got a pretty good report there. Got some updates on some of our other projects coming up with turf fields and, and some other things. So got a lot of construction things going on and probably that's gonna continue from here on out. So John's not here. So anybody have anything that they want to add on that?
No.
Okay. All right. Consideration of the consent agenda. We are approving Bluegrass Middle School History Club to travel to Washington DC via commercial carrier. John Harden High School Senior Class to travel to Atlanta, Georgia via commercial carrier. Financial services, we received the financial reports. Got our draft budget in. Just one of the early stages of the process on that. And after legislature meets and we find out some more, then we'll get, get more into that, that budget detail. Got some BGs that we're approving for the John Harden High School paving project, the site acquisition for the 800 South Lockston Parkway and Radcliffe. We're approving a contract with Brandenburg Telecom Telecommunication Services. Got a $3,000 donation from Jones Home Center to the Residential Maintenance Program at the Early College and Career Center. That's very much appreciated. And if anybody else feels need to donate anything, we're, we're always welcome to take that.
And John takes great pictures and advertisement for that.
Absolutely. We will get, get your name out there quite a bit. The, we've got some change orders and BGs with East Harden and Lincoln Trail. I think we are just about ready to close those two projects out. So that will, that will be good. Revised BG1 for John Harden and BG2 and 3 for North Harden and John Harden turf projects. Pretty excited about those. I think those are gonna look pretty good. We're approving the construction manager contract with Weir for the new West Harden Middle School project. And got some school-wide fundraisers. And I think that's about it. Is there anything in the consent agenda that anyone wants to pull out, change, talk about?
I just want to send a big thank you to the folks at Jones Home Center. That's my family. So I know those people and I really appreciate what they're doing there.
They're not my family, but I know them too.
I guess you do.
For a long time. And they are good people.
The residential maintenance program just continues to grow.
Yeah, we need more of it.
Absolutely. So the funding is, will be put to good use, absolutely.
That's John Wright learned about climbing up on scaffolding the day to take the picture. And we all figured out that wasn't near as easy as what some make it look.
Yeah. I guess you do it all the time. It must be, but it's not fun, is it?
Do you need a motion to approve the, I'll move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All right. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Consent agenda is approved. And we've got several action items tonight. The first one is unfortunately, we learned that the, Mr. Thomas Metcalf that was elected for Mr. Wise's board seat is not able to serve on the board due to his, his current employment. And so therefore, he has tendered his resignation. And so the first thing that we need to do is approve and accept that resignation.
Okay. Madam Chair, I move to accept the resignation of Mr. Thomas Metcalf, Division 3 seat.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries. So with that, I think Mr. Wright will be putting something on the website, probably even this evening. There will be notices run in the newspaper over the next couple of weekends. And after two weeks with the applications that we get, then we will start the process of selecting a new board member for that seat. All right. Next order of business is election of the 2023 Board Chair. First time since I've been on the board that we're going to have a new one, apparently.
I think we are gonna have a new one.
Like it or not. That's right. That's right.
Madam Chair, I do want to make a nomination. And before I make it, let me just say that replacing Charlie will not be easy. The short time that I've been on the board, he was a fantastic chair. He helped me tremendously and his knowledge of school matters was just phenomenal. And I'm not sure people realize just what a contribution Charlie Wise has made over his 16 years on the board. So whoever becomes the Board Chair has a big chair to fill.
Could not agree more.
And having said that, I nominate Don Johnson as the 2023 Chair of the Board.
I second.
No, no other nominations?
I don't think so.
I have a motion and a second. Any other discussion?
I think Don would be perfect for this job. I, I, I know that she's been sort of in training for this for a while and watching what goes on and been there to take up the slack when Charlie was unavailable various times. So I'm sure she'll do a wonderful job. I have a lot of confidence that that'll work.
Well, I appreciate that and appreciate the confidence. I will second what Mr. Blain said. Mr. Wise's seat is not going to be an easy one to fill. And we, we will miss him for a, a long time coming. He's, he, as, as Mr. Blain said, just a wealth of knowledge. And sure, he'll be getting some phone calls so we better keep his, his phone nearby. But I will, I will try to do my best to step into that seat.
We have to vote on that.
Yes. So with that being said, I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
You better not vote against.
I'll, I'll hold my tongue. All right. And now next is election of the 2023 Board Vice Chair.
Madam Chair, I would like to nominate Mr. Ben Segal to be, to serve as the 2023 Vice Chair of the Board. Again, the two years that I've been on the board, we have, the two years that we've been, I've been on the board, Ben has just been a phenomenal board member. He also has helped me tremendously. We've had some very interesting discussions online between us about matters and I always enjoy them. He's incredibly smart and he's from my hometown. So.
Ben is always learning and is always a, a wealth of information as well. So, and I think, Mr. Casey, you seconded that already. Is that correct? All right. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Looks like Ben. You're, you're filling the seat.
All right.
All right. So next, we need to affirm Ms. Morgan as the 2023 Board Secretary and Treasurer.
Madam Chair, I'll move to affirm Superintendent Teresa Morgan as the 2023 Secretary Treasurer of the Board.
Second.
All right. I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
And opposed? Motion carries. Moving on down our list, we've got, we need to affirm the 2023 District Finance Corporation Chair and Secretary Treasurer.
And since I'm on the, in the nominating mood tonight, Chair, I move to affirm the Harden County School Board Chair, Don Johnson, as the chairperson and Superintendent Teresa Morgan as the Secretary Treasurer for the Harden County District Finance Corporation.
I'll second.
We've got a good thing going here. All right. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We got one more. This is to approve the remaining 2023 Board Meeting Dates, Times, and Locations for the regular meeting. I know we've, in the past, talked about, batting around different ideas, but it seems that what we've used for at least as many years as I've been on the board has worked. And so I think what we're looking at is keeping things the same. So the third Thursday's, our noon meetings at the school and then our evening meetings here.
It seems to work well and it also gives us flexibility that we can always, we've been able to move it when we've had a conflict without problems. So I think it's wise to keep doing that. And you need a motion for that.
I do.
I will move to approve the remaining 2023 Board Meeting Dates, Times, and Locations as contained in the list provided us and in the, and on the agenda tonight.
And I'll second.
All right. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That carries us through our action items. Does anybody have any new business? And Superintendent's report.
John's gonna pull up a video here. And this is, the video he's going to pull up is, I know many of you who watch sports will often see one of the reporters for the sports walk down the football field or the basketball court and do an interview with athletes. But I am incredibly proud of the academics that we offer in Harden County. And to show that to everyone, we have some past graduates. And John Wright goes out and does a quick interview with them and it's called Strides of Pride. And just have asked John to share one of these tonight. And how many of these have we done so far, John?
We've done probably seven.
Seven. So look for these and sell them.
We finished, finished, finished eight today.
Eight today. And so please share these with individuals. Make sure if you see an individual. I know John's gonna show Dr. Russ Van Zant tonight and many people gave him a shout out. Maybe a tad of harassment that went along with it and well-deserved in both areas. So John, if you don't mind.
And Mrs. Morgan, I want to give credit to Gina Ryan. Gina and her staff walk backwards as we're walking forward in these interviews. And she not only has to walk backwards with a camera, but she also edits these pieces one masterfully. So Gina is the real work in this.
Our welding students, Mr. Robbins, we're hoping will come up with a way to put a chair on to where they can just pull her back on wheels.
Sure. He's got a chair in the corner.
There you go.
Hey, everybody. Welcome to another edition of Strides of Pride. My name is John Wright, Director of Public Relations at Harden County Schools. I'm here with my friend, Dr. Russ Van Zant, who is a dentist here in Harden County and a 1991 graduate of this institution, right?
That's right. I was just telling you just a minute ago that not only did I graduate from Central Harden here in 1991, but this is also the building where I went to middle school, Harden Central Middle School.
Right.
Before going to East Harden.
So you must have had an interest, Russ, in, in the sciences and things like that to propel you on into, not only earning your bachelor's degree, but dental school as well?
Oh, no question. And, you know, I was thinking earlier just how good of instruction teachers I had at East Harden and Central Harden in math, you know, geometry, algebra, calculus, biology, all the sciences, all the things that prepared me when I went to UK. I was ready. You know, you never know if you're gonna be prepared when you go to college. But when I went to UK, made good grades, did well. And it, I think it was a testament to the teaching I had in high school.
What inspired you here at Central Harden to go on to make that jump?
You know, I always knew that I wanted to do something, you know, in healthcare. My grandfather was a physician. And so I, at first, I actually thought it was gonna be physical therapy. And I went up there with that intention, then thought about physician's assistant and then settled on dental school. I always loved my dentist here locally, growing up. He was a good friend of our family. And so with that math and science background, it was kind of a natural transition just to, to go to dental school.
Now, obviously, you had that opportunity to go to dental school and you got the math and science, the foundation that you needed here. Talk about the opportunities that you see now, not only as a community member, but as a parent of some, of Harden County School students. The opportunities are endless here in this district.
It's amazing just what, what's going on, not only within the buildings here, but over at EC3, the Early College and Career Center. All the pathways and, and the things that are available that certainly wasn't available to us. And so I just find it fascinating what kids now, the, the background, the, the basics and the things that they can do here in high school to prepare them for college. I certainly would have loved to have had that back then in, in the stone ages. But now the, the, the opportunities are limitless.
Here with another alum for which we are, we are extremely proud, Dr. Russ Van Zant, for this edition of Strides of Pride.
And then if we don't mind, I'm gonna ask our principals out there to please stand. Any of our principals that are here?
There's one or two.
Tonight. That's great.
Yes. And then I'm gonna ask our directors to please stand, all of our directors. So you can see they're here tonight, but this is Board Appreciation Month. So I know they share with me that we... So I know they share with me that we want to thank you all for your support and chief, sorry. We'll let you stand too, Mr. Seg. You're the Lone Ranger, sorry. But all of the support that you give them on a daily basis, they do a phenomenal job in our district. But I know they would like to give you a round of applause to thank you for your hard work and dedication. And then I'm going to ask Ms. Polly, she may need some help, but we'll, oh no, she is able to carry them. So we were very pleasantly surprised that we were able to get these guests in. You guys can have a seat. But we say this every year and it's more true now. I'm not sure that's grammatically correct, but that's the way I'm going to say it. Board members do not just show up for our noon meeting and evening meeting. They get endless phone calls, they seek input. And even when they're not seeking input, people are willing to give them input on a regular basis. They answer emails, they answer phone calls, they go to the grocery and they're always asked about what's happening. I feel sure by tomorrow afternoon, somebody will ask Mr. Blain, where's the new West Harden going to be? And he's going to say, I wish I could tell you. But that is endless. So we just, I had no idea how much we need to appreciate our board until you speak to other districts and you realize that we are certainly in a phenomenal position to get the support for our schools. And they truly help children succeed by placing student interest first. So the board commitments up here are not just words. They live by them each and every day and each and every month at our meetings, as you can see with our focus on academics and what we focus our time and energies on. So you all have an umbrella with the logo of Harden County Schools on it. We understand that it will stand up against wind. You might want to take that opportunity to make sure that's true as you walk out of here this evening. But sincerely, we appreciate you all and all of your time and effort. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And that's it.
All right. We do not need an executive session, is that correct? All right. Board calendar, February 16th will be our regular lunch board meeting at Cecilia Valley Elementary. And then that evening, we will be at the, over at the PAC. Do, yep, do, do that twice a year, recognize a, a lot of students and that's always, always a good time. So that'll be next, next month on the 16th. And then February 24th to the 26th is the KSBA Annual Conference that I think we're all attending, is that right? So we can go learn how to be better board members. So thank you all very much for coming out tonight. You want to continue your motions?
I might as well do the last one. Move that we adjourned.
I'll second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
We do have refreshments out in the foyer. So if you all would like to stay and speak to our board members, please feel free to do that. And I believe we have plenty out there. Thank you all.